Let's go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Waterville Planning Board meeting. We have a new member joining us tonight, Patty Flynn. This is her first meeting, so please go easy on her. You know who I'm talking to, the people that present to us all the time. All right. Item number one, approval of minutes of the June 10, 2025 Planning Board meeting. Anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion and approve them.
Second from anybody?
Was anybody else here besides you and me, David?
I was here.
Who else was here? Just you and I, though, wasn't it?
Was it? Well, I'll second.
Maybe Tom was here.
All right. All those in favor that were here? All right. Anyone want to abstain? There we go.
Extentions or?
Right. Yeah. All right. Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflict with any of the items that we're going to be discussing tonight? Not seeing any. We'll go to number three. DW LLC is requesting approval for revisions to a previously approved plan for Reservoir Hill.
Good evening. My name is Randy Butler, and I'm with Dirigo Engineering. Reservoir Hill subdivision was approved about three years ago. Ninety-five percent of it is in the town of Fairfield, and just about an acre, perhaps an acre and a half falls within Waterville. One of the requirements when we had the subdivision approved at that time was that the fire chief at that time that was in Fairfield required that residential homes have a, each have a fire sprinkler. And over the last couple of years, since the site has been developed, lots have become available. We've found that that was quite a sticking point with many buyers. Our friend Kevin Violet, who's actually the Planning Board Chair for Fairfield, advocated for the board to remove that requirement. The new fire chief, who's been there for, I'm not sure, a year or two, Travis Leary, there's a letter, a portion of his letter is referenced. I believe you've got a copy of the letter from Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief here, referring to that letter. Essentially, the town of Fairfield has signed off on removing that requirement. But because we do have a small portion of the subdivision within Waterville, we also feel like we need approval from you folks to remove that from the plans. So that's what's here before you tonight, is just that simple change to remove the requirement for fire sprinklers.
Yep, I read the letter. It's pretty straightforward. There's obviously some new conditions. I'm assuming you saw those, the three conditions?
Yes.
Correct. Yep. That's fine, right?
Yes. Yep, absolutely. And we had already had the fire pond and dry hydrant. We're already in the plans anyway, so we're in compliance with that.
Yep. Any additional questions from the board?
Has our fire department had any say in this?
Yeah, that's the letter that I'm referring to.
That's our fire department, though? No, okay.
Yeah. His letter referenced the letter of the chief in Fairfield, and so they have a fire pond, dry hydrant, and I'm not sure what the other thing was.
Just a requirement that there be no less than two feet of water above the strainer. In other words, that the fire pond have adequate volume for its purpose.
Okay. And we just need to vote on the approval?
Do we need a motion?
On the, we just need to vote on the approval of the changes?
And then sign the plan.
Yep.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? No opposed?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you going to be hanging around?
Yes.
Okay. Well, item number two. New Beginnings Church is requesting informal pre-application review to construct a 6,000-square-foot youth building at 392 Main Street.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Chris. I am the youth pastor at New Beginnings Church of God, and we are looking to build a new youth building. Our existing one is getting old, and we have a lot of teenagers. So we're looking to build a new one on our property, and we're just looking for approval from the board. And we have the blueprints up here of our property. We have about 10 acres. Down there on the bottom is where we're looking to build it. And our existing building is, the one on the, the youth building is on the right down there with the silver roof. Oh, thank you. Right there is where we're at now with the teenagers. We have about 80 teenagers every week at our church that attend, average. And we're looking to move right here. 6,000-square-foot building, metal building.
6,000?
6,000 square foot, yes.
What's the plan for the existing building?
It would turn into storage or something else the church would use, but not ministry like it is now.
Yep.
It's an old barn, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just getting tired. So the plan is just to upgrade a little bigger room to grow and just upgraded building.
We do have another plan. The next plan shows more detail of the?
Yep. Oh, right there?
Well, this is the floor plan.
Sorry. There we go.
If you care to see the floor plan and elevation is what that is. And then the previous sheet.
Yep, right there.
Right. So that's the more detailed plan. I think you should have received that by email.
That's the retention pond is right behind. This would be the retention pond, if you wanted to know what that was. And the building, 150 feet by 40 feet. Metal steel building on a slab. So that's what we're looking to do, just one level, one.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're just looking for approval from the board.
Yeah, I mean, tonight, this is just the informal pre-application review, right? So do you know when you'd be coming back?
Fairly soon.
Yep.
It won't be one of your, if you're meeting once a month typically, is that your schedule? Yeah, so we should be able to get back next month then.
Yep. Okay. And do we have a quorum for the 22nd?
We haven't checked in on the quorum for, in August, we have the 27th. Colby is coming. Do you think you can be on the 26th?
Of this month, yes.
Of August?
Of August. So, yes, let's continue that.
All right. So then we need to know if we have a quorum for August 26.
Yeah, so we have, I mean, it would be the 22nd, then the 12th, then the 26th. So I don't, those would be the scheduled.
We can't meet the next meeting in July.
Okay.
Can you put your mic on?
Your mic.
It won't be ready anyway. So we're looking at, there are two meetings in August.
Yep.
And we already have Colby scheduled for the 26th. So if the 26th works for them, it makes more sense to come on the 26th. So I need to know who's available on August 26.
I am.
Keith, Cassie, do you?
Yep.
Tom, do you know if you're available on August 26?
I'm going to be here.
You are? Okay, great. And Patty?
Yes.
All right. So, thank you. So we do have a quorum, but just barely. We have five again.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll be seven.
Pastor, I have a couple of developments above you, above Main Street, and I go by your place every day.
Yes.
And you must be very proud of what you're doing. It's very clean, well organized, and your focus is in the right place. You're doing God's work.
Your mic.
Having a great time there.
Yeah, they just want to.
Just closer. Well, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. It's been great. I've been the youth pastor there for 24 years, and it's been excellent. And the average youth group is five or six kids, and we average 80-plus. And it's great. And it's just, and we just love it, so.
How long you been there?
I just told them, 24 years.
Oh, wow.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right.
Just for the record, I'm keeping the minutes. Would you mind telling me what your last name?
Harrington. Chris Harrington.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. All good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
All right. Next item, Violet Investment Company is requesting approval for revisions to a previously approved plan for City View Estates.
Hi. Were you talking to me about being nice to people for a change?
You know he was.
No, no, no.
It was Brandon.
Oh.
I thought you were talking to Kevin.
Yeah, I'll do my best.
Welcome to the board, man.
So Violet Estates is up on, I pulled my thing up.
I'm right next to New Beginning Church, and this is a multi-family, multi-family subdivision you approved back in 2022. And so what we're doing now is just some changes for the attorneys.
Close the program, Jeff, and try a little bit again.
There we go. And the only thing that's really changed from the previous plan we had up here is down next to the entrance of the, where the road is being built now or has been built, he's purchased a couple other pieces of property from the abutters. This one, we had as a lease before, and the lease goes down to this line. But he was able to purchase this piece that's kind of encircled by the blue, as well as this additional piece here. So there's two new pieces that need to be added to the subdivision. And the legal name of the owner has changed. It's now City View Estates, Inc. And so that and the name change and the new property, the lawyers advise us to get reapproval of the new change. So that's it. It's just the, the lot has expanded. We're not building any additional homes or anything in there. It just gives us a little bit more buffer between us and our neighbors.
And the name of the project changed slightly, you said?
Yeah, the name of the owner, it used to be Ellen Violet Properties, I believe. It's now City View Estates, Inc.
Right. You said the name of the project was changed. It's on your, you sent us a message with a list of changes.
Now City View Estates Condominium. It's a long thing.
And housing for older persons.
And housing for older persons. So, and we also, I think Anne emailed me earlier today and asked, we wanted to ask for an extension, because these are going to take a while to build. I think he's planning the road, and all of the infrastructure is in now except for the final pavement. And he's ready to break ground with two or three properties soon, I think probably within a couple of weeks. So we'll see some of these homes starting to go in there.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, there. Good to see you. It's been a while.
It has.
So you said those are, these were purchased specifically to be a buffer between the road and the actual development?
Yeah, or between the neighbors and the development. You know, there's no development proposed in there, because if you can see this little dashed line here, that's our building setback line. So there's really nothing you could put in there and still meet setback requirement. So it's just going to be more open space for the subdivision.
All right. Cool. Thank you.
The property that you're discussing right now, is that closer to the church that's up there? Does it move closer to them?
Exactly. This is, the church is this property right down here. New Beginnings Church is down here. And then there's, out on the very edge of the screen here is North Main Street. And so you can, City View Estates Road has been constructed in there. It's still gravel, but I think they want to build a couple of the homes first, or as many of the homes as they can, before they pave the road, just to avoid tearing up the pavement with, when they put the homes in.
Does any of that development, Abut, Countryway, do you know?
Yes. The backside of it does. Countryway is up here, I believe.
Okay.
Right on this side. You can zoom in there.
So I see on the site plan, there's phase one and phase two. I know we approved phase one. Was phase?
And that's all we're asking for approval now.
Okay.
We approved the whole thing, but knowing that we would have to come back for additional.
So right now, the extension that's in place now goes out to 2027. And that's for phase one.
And this is phase one here, which looks like six homes.
And so is, the request is to go out to 2029 just for phase one?
If we can. If not, you know.
Yeah.
That's, you know, 2027 does give us a couple of construction seasons.
Right.
To build this phase. So that would be good, but, you know, rather than come back in a couple of years.
Sure. Yeah.
You know, we could do that now, if you want to. If not, no harm, no foul.
Yeah. All right. So we can either make a motion for both approving the new site plan and an additional two-year extension, or we can do them one at a time. I'll wait for someone to make a motion.
Do you need the extension to do six homes?
I don't think so. I think we're, you know, going to be, those six homes should be built in the next two years easily.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Thank you. And I have copies over here for you to sign. And if you want to do that after the meeting, you can give them to Mrs. Beveridge, and I'll pick them up. Or if it's a nice day, she likes to bring them over to my office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Last up, Harris Property Services LLC is requesting site plan review for a
change of use at 104 Kennedy Memorial Drive.
Good evening.
My name is Rose Crossman, and I'm excited to announce that 104 Kennedy Memorial Drive hopefully will be a new pottery studio called Elmhurst Pottery Studio. We're just waiting for some things to come up here. So we have a sign, cards, logo. And so the plan is, is that we're going to be offering classes for people to come in and learn how to use the wheel on a pottery, using pottery and to hand-build things as well. And so it's also open for people to come in and paint bisque, so that if they're nervous and are afraid to build something, there's something there for them available. And we'll also have a room where people come in and have small birthday parties.
I'm sorry. What did you say the last name is?
The small room for people to have small birthday parties. Yep.
I was reading some of the, some of the documents that were sent to us, and it does look like a great opportunity. And I'm assuming there's a typo right where you talk about the different, the birthday parties and bachelorette parties and stuff like that. I'm assuming it's supposed to say no alcohol will be allowed, nor will any food be sold?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes. If that's not in there.
It says now alcohol, so I'm assuming it was no. Just wanted to clarify, so.
Yeah. No alcohol.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
No alcohol allowed. No food will be sold at the premises or anything like that. So we offer several different classes and memberships for people to come in who already know how to do pottery, and so they can go in and work independently as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Where is the building?
It is 104 KMD, Kennedy Memorial Drive, is a few buildings up from Hannaford. It used to be a barely-used boutique.
I know where it is.
Okay.
The blue building. Yep. So there's an addition that would be built?
No. No addition. Nope.
Yeah. So she's using the?
She's using the site plan that the owner's parents used to open the original barely-used.
Got it.
And Mrs. Harris needed a wheelchair, and so they needed to add on a ramp. And that's why there was an addition.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm excited about this because there's a very long waitlist for the other pottery studio in Waterville, like extremely long, so.
There is.
That's great, and there are certainly not enough places to have birthday parties, so I'm excited.
Thank you. I am too.
So reading the contract zone, I mean, this is really, Anne, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this is really just a formality of approving a new use?
Well, not entirely. I asked, one of the requirements is to have a letter from the city engineer.
Okay.
And Andy McPherson went out to the site today, and he wrote a letter suggesting that it would be safer if all traffic came in off KMD and out onto Sawyer Street. I sent you that letter, and you received it too?
I did, yes, and I made a copy of it and brought it with me.
Is that, does that work for you?
It does for me. It works if it's okay for the council and if everybody, I mean, the space is big enough and for people to go in and out. It just makes the flow easier.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you the numerous times that I've pulled out of that parking lot, I've never gone out onto KMD because.
We usually take the back road down, and then you can actually go right into Hannaford parking lot and use the lights to turn into the, back onto KMD.
Yep. Okay.
I have a question about the programming, and I'll echo, I'll reiterate. I think it's a great idea because.
Can you turn on my mic?
Oh, Patty, your mic.
Oh, sorry. Am I, am I?
Am I now?
Thank you.
Okay, anyway, yeah, I'll say it again. I think it's a great idea. Pottery's really popular. Anywhere I've been, I've done, I've done some claywork myself in the distant past, and it's, it's a real community-building kind of an atmosphere, more so than any, almost anything else I can think of. So one of my, so I was wondering, one of the most fun things that I did was outdoor firings with Raku, and then I know a lot of people like to do wood firings and build these huge kilns. Are you going to have things like that, outdoor firings? So big kilns, no. It's not big enough for that kind of space. But outdoor firings, it was something that we thought about. They would have to come and ask for, they do like trashcan pottery, and that's where you have a fire in the trashcan, and of course, I would go to the fire department and do whatever permits I need to do to have that. It's not something that I've thought of at this time, because that's, I have a person who's master degree in pottery who knows how to do that. I don't. Yeah, okay. So I would, I would have to work with her and the fire department and whoever to make sure that everything is safe, because it has a pretty good size. Yeah, that makes sense. I might be jumping the gun a little because I'm, I'm new. So it, my take is that you're at the very beginning of this permitting process. Correct. We're just, we're, we're not ready to open, waiting for approval, so there's a few things left that we have to have approved, like my sink needs to be approved by the, by code. And other than that, just getting the last few things ready to get the website up and going, and people are like banging on my door, and that's one of the reasons why I started doing this, is because I taught it in adult ed for several years, and people just keep contacting, contacting me and saying the waitlist at the other pottery place is just so long, they can't get in, so.
Yeah. Great.
I also have proposed for a sign to be placed up to, and I did get emailed back from that. It's supposed, it's going to be a sign that's going to be smaller than the one that was there previously, if you wanted to hear those dimensions on that.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Okay, so the posts will be four by four, pressure-treated, eight-foot-long posts. The first post will be 24 inches from the building, second post is 63 inches and a half from the building. The posts will be three feet in the ground, five feet above, and the sign dimensions are 26 inches high by 36 inches wide, and it will be suspended from two different posts. And that also has been sent out, and I'm working with code, and they said that I have to talk to you guys first, and then, then I go to the code enforcement to get a certificate from them, and then other things that I have to go through.
Okay.
And I do have a picture, I think it's on here, for what my sign is going to look like.
I have all of her materials here.
Well, I, I have a copy of it here. If you want to see what it looks like.
How do I get my other file?
Try to make it elegant and simple.
This is why I was asked that it was pretty long. What I'm trying to do is get back to her files, David. You were giving me. I think he's trying to write a motion on. I'm trying to.
Go down to the bottom of the screen, the yellow folder thing, yep.
Oh, all right, thank you very much.
Yep.
So you want to show your, what is your business plan? I think your, your sign.
It's, it's right on the front of the business plan.
Thanks.
It looks, that looks good.
Maybe if I click on it, all this other stuff will go away.
It's part of the document.
I don't have to do it on my own. So one of the requirements of the ordinance, of the contract zone is, is landscaping along Sawyer Street, but it's lawn.
It's lawn already, so, and it's been like that for years, so if, I don't think you have to require it if you, if it's, if you don't think it's necessary. And I can show you, I should be able to show you a photo of what it looks like from Sawyer. So there, there is some vegetation on either side of the lawn.
And you're saying there's something in the ordinance saying there needs to be?
The contract zone, but it's been that way. The Harrises never planted anything, so, or if they did it, I, I never saw.
Yeah, I, in the contract zone, it says, screening and landscaping requirements. The developer shall supplement existing plantings along Sawyer Street with appropriate street trees and flowering shrubs, providing a landscape strip at least 15 feet in width. This was, again, from 2011.
Yeah. So it's been without landscaping for a long time.
Right. I don't feel like now would be the appropriate time to start enforcing that. So.
Unless you'd like to put in some landscaping.
Voluntarily, maybe, at some point.
I'm assuming the dumpster is already screened.
There's no dumpster.
There's no dumpster.
No, there's, I'm just going to bring trash home with me, because there isn't that much trash.
If you do put a dumpster, it has to be screened from Sawyer Street.
Understood.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board, or questions from the public? Okay. I wrote some notes. I, so I, I'm going to go ahead and make an emotion, make a motion to approve the, the new use as presented, with the conditions from the city engineer regarding the one-way traffic flow, and approve the signage pending approval by code enforcement that it meet the zoning standards per the contract zone. So that's the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was the last item, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And don't forget to sign.
Oh, yes.